Public hearing on the 2014, I'm gonna say, draft budget. Is that the phrase there? All right.
Adopted.
No, adopted budget. It's okay. All right. So at this time, last night, we did have a similar public hearing, and this is actually our second one. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on the draft budget. There's any comments, public comments to it at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll now actually move into item F, study session on the 2014, to be adopted, soon to be adopted budget, our draft budget. Dr. Sugiyama?
Yes, President Dice, members of the board. This evening, we'll be presenting, Mr. Benet will be presenting to you information on the preliminary budget for 2014-15. Of course, the board is scheduled to adopt the budget at its June 25 meeting, as school districts are required to adopt a budget for the subsequent year, not later than June 30th. So Mr. Benet will lead us through the presentation, the materials.
So welcome all. This, I will tell you, has been one of the more challenging budgets that I've developed in my career with having to deal with the local control accountability plan and the new local control funding formula that was put into place last year, but we kind of grew into it. And this is really our first time using that new local control funding formula as a basis of our general fund unrestricted dollars to be used in 2014-15. So with that, I did give you a presentation back in January with regard to the governor's proposals in January. And for education throughout the state, those dollars really haven't changed much. The governor's May revise did increase by $2.4 billion at the statewide level. However, they're entirely consumed by other expenses, none of which went to education. They went to things like Medi-Cal. They're putting money into a rainy day fund. And the governor is paying off some of the wall of debt, some of that which is owed to education, but it's not seen as additional growth dollars for school districts. One of the other changes from the January proposal to the May revise, which we're using that information to develop the 14-15 budget, is an increase in the STIRS payments for employers. So it will cost us an additional 1.25 percent for our certificated staff members that are in the California State Teachers Retirement System. So those are the basic changes in the governor's budget from his January proposal to the May revise. Now, there will still be some changes as the legislature makes proposals from this May revise, and they have negotiations with the governor for the final state budget that is adopted, which is supposed to occur before June 30th. So throughout the state and for the education budget, again, we are using the LCFF-based grants amounts for 2014-15. And we went through some of this information with the board at previous meetings. We went through how all that was calculated and how the supplemental concentration grants were calculated and what they mean to Emory. Cash flow for 14-15 will be improved. When I said the governor is paying off the wall of debt, he was basically borrowing from education and paying us a year later than when we earned the money. So we were having to watch our cash flow. Well, the governor is going to make us whole next year, so we will get the money that we earned in 14-15 in the same year that we earn it, instead of paying it a year later. There is a small increase in funding under the LCFF funding model. Again, an LCAP begins to be implemented. So this is the first year of LCAP, 14-15, and we'll be going through the LCAP study session as soon as we're finished with this budget study session. Common Core begins to be implemented. It's been a two-year process. We received about $150,000 last year. Some of those dollars, we did use this year, and some of those dollars will be used in So the LCFF funding model includes a cost of living adjustment, and right now, that's calculated at 0.85 percent, which is very small. We do get additional dollars, but those dollars will be coming in under the supplemental concentration grant line item, so to speak. So what is some of these effects on Emory? Well, we will be receiving about $85,000 more in our base grant, $241,000 in our supplemental concentration grant. The cost of the STIRS increase of 1.25 percent will be approximately $53,700. Some of the other major changes going into 14-15 is our federal gear-up grant, which I believe this year was about in excess of $300,000. Included about $86,000 in payroll expenses. So next year, going into 14-15, without that federal grant, the district will have to pay for those salaries in 14-15. So that will cost the general fund about $86,000. One of the other expenses that the district is, will be picking up, or general fund will be picking up, is the expense for our nurse. In the past, it's been funded out of MAU. And the federal government has withheld payments to states because of the way school districts were reporting the allocations or the use of the MAU reimbursement, well, not the use, but how we were reporting to gain those dollars. So they want to, they wanted districts to clean up the way they were reporting our costs. And we're a little more specific and stringent with the, with the way districts were reporting those costs. They wanted us to be more specific. So we've done that. We've worked with a consultant with regard to submitting that information to the feds. We have all that collected. All of those costs are in for actually 12-13 and 13-14, and we're very hopeful to start getting those dollars very soon. We've made numerous calls to our consultant because we really don't know where that sits yet between the state and the feds with regards to us recouping our dollars.
Mr. Benet, I thought we had made a decision to pay for the nurse out of the partial tax.
We do, but that's still an additional burden on the district that we didn't have in the past. And we were assuming that we'd get those funds, by now, we would know how we'd get those funds. And as of today, we still don't know that those MAU dollars are coming in. It was our hope that we would know by now that those funds would come in, but we're still kind of in limbo with that.
Well, I mean, when you say general fund, I'm thinking more of the base, not the partial tax. So when you, when you describe this as the general fund, are you actually talking about the base, or are you talking about the partial tax? Or are you consolidating them both together?
I'm consolidating both, because in my head, both of those programs are unrestricted dollars.
I got that.
Mr. Benet, the $85,000 base increase, is that after these other base costs have been taken into account, the STIRS, the gear-up, the nurse?
No, that's...
Or before?
I think it's before.
So, so then we have a sort of a negative, we have a negative base increase, as it were?
Right, and I'll get to that because it all shows in our deficit spending projection for next year. So once we accumulate all the revenues and expenses, some of these things are what plays into the deficit spending.
Can we go back to the MAU a second? So are we doing just the MAU billing, or are we doing the LEA billing as well with Medi-Cal?
I believe we're doing...
Because MAU is just time surveys, not direct service.
We're doing both the LEA, Medi-Cal billing, and MAU billing.
Okay. And what agency are we using to recapture those funds?
That specific program is operated by Ms. Dunn, so...
Good evening.
Say that again.
So what agency are we, you said contracted out to recapture the funds?
We work with an agency called Leader Services.
Leader Services, okay.
And Leader Services takes care of all of our billing, and they send the information and everything that we've done on our weekly, on our week-a-quarter surveys to Michelle Cowart over at the regional office, and then they send it on to the federal government. And I sent, I called today and sent some information, and I asked about a month ago, and they said that we have submitted everything for the last two years that we were supposed to submit, because we had to actually go back, look at all the quarter, by quarter by quarter, they had to resubmit each one of those reports, and then take out the people that they said would not, like the PE teacher, who actually did talk about MAU in her PE class, but that was not one that the federal government would pay for.
Right, they're not recognized, yeah.
So, or recognize. So we had to take all of those out, and they resubmitted them again for us, and so they're in submission. And we're in line with all the other school districts in the state of California to take care of that. And what was interesting is when we got the deferral in the first place, they went to very large school districts like LA, I don't think they went to Oakland, but someplace else, and they asked the folks who were doing the submissions, what was MAU, and nobody could tell them. In our district, they knew, because we tutored people, got information, but they didn't ask them all. So everybody in the state was blanketed with the information, but that's how it's working at this point. We also do LEA billing, which means, billing, which means the nurse, the social worker, the speech therapist, all of them can bill for Medi-Cal hours.
Psychologist, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we, as I understood it, number one, as you explained, it wasn't that we were doing anything wrong, there were other bigger districts that weren't really following what they were supposed to be doing, and then everyone got hit with this delay.
The entire state of California was put on notice.
Okay. But number two, is the money coming back such that some point next year, or sometime, maybe even this year, we might be able to pay for our nurse out of these federal dollars instead of our general fund dollars?
Most definitely. I'm hoping this year, they said that we were in the queue, whatever that means, and I'm going to keep on them again to just kind of give us an idea, but we're at the mercy of the federal government. Now that they're healthier and they're giving out information on it, it seems like that we should be getting paid this year, but the program is continuing.
In 14-15.
The program will be continued for the next two, three years, actually, so...
So in 14-15, we might actually get, does that mean...
We get 10, 11?
We get three years.
12-13, 13-14, and we'd get 14-15.
Okay, so...
Because it's usually a year's delay, so 14-15 would actually come in, you know, a year's delay, but we get the other two.
My question I'm not trying to ask is, is that $89,000 then going to go away, as it were, go back into our general fund at some point, once we get these reimbursements?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Sorry.
Mr. Benet doesn't seem...
Yes, well, we're hoping to pay ourselves back first, and then continue the program with additional MAU dollars. The problem was, we were under the understanding we would receive those dollars by now, and we have not, so...
So you're saying we need to put it in the budget?
That's...
That is to be adopted?
Right. To be funded out of the general fund.
So to continue to have a nurse.
Right. And our hope is to receive those dollars in the next four to six months. I'll be back, we'll be back as soon as we find out that we get these dollars. We'll do a budget adjustment, and we'll convey that information to the board at the first interim report, I hope, knock on wood. But for right now, it's being funded out of the general fund. So we'll pay ourselves back for the last two years, and then proceed with the nurse being funded out of MAU going forward.
So the MAU funds are unrestricted. I do have a concern, if we're getting the LEA funds and just putting them in one pot, those can't be used to pay for mandated staffing, they have to be supplemental and not supplant anything, so we are differentiating between the two accounts.
Definitely.
Definitely, okay. I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
So the next slide breaks down our general revenues, and I'll be going through in more detail the backup for the sources of revenues on a line item basis. So there, I'll go through more additional information in a bit, as soon as I get through this PowerPoint. So we have our unrestricted dollars at $8.4 million. Our restricted dollars, 1.4, for total income estimated to be $9.8 million. The sources are LCFF at $5.7 million, federal revenues $267,000, other state revenues $529,000, other local revenues $2,852,000, most of which, actually, $2.5 million come from our parcel tax. And then we receive a transfer in from our SLPA for our special ed program for $491,000.
Okay, so that's the restricted funds?
Yes.
Special ed, okay. That was the question that I had. Yeah, okay.
Going to our expenditure page, we have certificated salaries, $4.2 million, classified salaries, 1.4, employee benefits, 2.3, books and supplies, $534,000, services, other operating expenses, 1.8, total expenses, $10,470,000. And then we make a contribution to our cafeteria fund of $176,000. That's what we're budgeting, which shows that we are deficit spending $749,000. So we had a, we're estimating a beginning balance of $4 million. With our expenses exceeding our revenues, our beginning, or ending balance is projected less than our beginning balance by $700,000. So we're estimating $3.3 million ending fund balance come June 30th, 2015. And then the breakdown of those dollars are under the components. And these are estimates as of June 30th, 2015. So there are certain things that can happen between now and then, like the payment of our MAU dollars back to us, which would increase our ending fund balance. So we have $10,000 for revolving cash fund. We have a 4 percent reserve designated for economic uncertainties, $425,000. We had a million dollars set aside in 2013-14 for our RDA loan. Because of our deficit spending, that has dropped considerably to $425,000. We have a reserve for the lease with our city for the use of our gym in the field. Originally, that was, that gets amateurized every year by about $37,500. So every year, it will go down, but we carry this as a liability on our books because we owe that to the city. And that goes to help pay for operational costs up and beyond what the district would provide to our students. So the PG&E water, sewer, and things like toilet paper, the field maintenance, custodial overtime. We have the capital outlay reserve, and that consists of $171,000 out of our parcel tax dollars. Last year was $400,000. We've spent that down. We've spent it on computers for our computer labs, we've spent it on computers for our teachers, iPads for our students at both the elementary and the high school level. We have made considerable investment in technology over this last year with one-time carryover dollars out of parcel tax. We are reserving dollars for MOU III with the city. That joint occupancy agreement calls for the district to set aside funds to replace large equipment and/or deferred maintenance items. For example, roofing, HVAC, asphalt, concrete, painting of the buildings, replacing the carpeting, replacing flooring, things that you would normally pay for over the next 30 to 50 years. We have no unappropriated general fund balance. We do have a restricted ending balance of approximately $297,000. The $241,000 consist of the supplemental concentration grant that still has to be allocated into our expenditure column.
Did I hear you right? You said we have no unrestricted, unappropriated?
That's correct.
Portion of the ending fund balance?
That's correct. Unless we were to get additional funds to come in, for example, the MAU dollars come in, and if those, let's say, are $200,000, we would pay ourselves back, those dollars would go into the ending fund balance in that line item.
Mm-hmm.
Or they could go into that line item.
The city 40-year lease, that's to pay for the upkeep of the facilities that we've...
That's to pay for the operational cost from MOU II.
Mm-hmm. Of the, of the...
Of the agreement that we currently have with the city for the use of the gym in the field.
I want, I just wanted to point out, though, that if there are other revenues that do come in, in the next three to six months, you need to look at those additional revenues as reducing the deficit, the projected deficit spending for next year. So it's not necessarily new dollars in that sense. I mean, on one hand, it's new dollars, but on the other hand, it serves the purpose of reducing the amount of deficit spending in the coming year.
Well, should it go into another fund, not the ending fund balance, when it comes in, if that's the case, like the MAU dollars? And I ask, in part, because the legislature moved last night in conference committee to set a new maximum on ending fund balances that...
Has that yet to be decided with the adoption of the budget, or is that just a proposal?
It's in the language that's going to the governor to be decided on Sunday by June 15th.
What's the increase in percentage?
I'm fuzzy on the details, because they haven't even released the language, but, you know, there's...
So they're increasing their reserve amount that districts have to reserve?
No. Well, they're setting a maximum, not a minimum. So above that, you're going to have to spend it. So, so that, if there's MAU dollars, for example, that we know we need to pay, then we should spend. If we've got city dollars that we need to set aside pursuant to MOU III or the joint occupancy agreement, we, you know, we might not, they're not true unappropriated ending fund balance that should be in the same fund.
So we may have to assign, we may have to assign some dollars then to restrict it?
I've, I have read something on that, and there's quite an argument whether this actually takes local control away from local districts, as opposed to, here, we're giving you LCFF, this is all local control, and now you're tying my hands with this additional maximum ending fund balance or reserve?
Yeah, so it's basically saying you need, you need to spend, you need to spend your money.
That puts districts in a precarious situation, especially districts like Emory, that have fluctuations in their ADA, which is the basis of your general purpose dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it...
So I'm still waiting to see what the...
To the extent it's legitimate, it, you know, there's a reasonable point that we shouldn't have a big pot of money sitting there that we're not using. We should be spending on programs and people and education. If we've got pieces, significant pieces of our ending fund balance that actually are restricted in a sense, because we have legal obligations we need to fulfill, we ought to make sure somehow that they're not in our ending fund balance if they're not really truly unrestricted dollars sitting in a reserve pot.
Well, this district could put those dollars towards that RDA loan instead of the unappropriated area.
Are we just going to have to assign it and restrict, restrict some of our ending balance?
Well, it's not restricted.
We will, we will cross that bridge when we come to it, because it...
Yeah, exactly.
Once it gets adopted into law, we still have 60 days after the adoption of the state budget to make adjustments to our budget, and that will be one of them.
All right, yeah, just something to put on the horizon, thinking about.
President Dice, could I ask if the board members could speak into their mic, because it's a little hard to hear on this side, board member questions.
So if we look at our multi-year projection, the middle highlight in yellow shows our deficit spending of $749,000. I would suggest, highly suggest that we start to address the deficit spending going forward. And the $472,000 is a little misleading, because what we've included in the revenue are the increases for the supplemental concentration grants and increases in the base grant to our LCFF funding, but because we still haven't allocated those dollars in the expenditure side, that those will increase and have to come from somewhere, and they'll have to come from the... come from the ending fund balance. So we, we truly need to address our deficit spending.
Okay, you kind of lost me there. So are you saying we're, we're counting the revenue, but we're not counting the expenses in the multi-year projection?
For our supplemental concentration grant dollars, because we, because we haven't adopted our plan yet, and we haven't identified where those supplemental concentration grant dollars are going to go.
So let me ask this.
So we, I can't budget expenditures if I don't have?
No, I got you. My question is regarding revenue. So how are we affected at this point with our ADA and how that reflects our revenue?
So what, what we've done for our budget projections for the next three years, we're, I'm projecting us to be flat at 703. I will tell you, our enrollment went down this year as opposed to last year.
Right.
And our ADA went down slightly at P2. We estimated 703, and I believe we came in at like 799.
699.
699, sorry. So that's a difference of four, which doesn't sound like a lot.
It is a lot.
But it is a lot for Emory.
So is our '15, '16, '17 revenue multi-year projection, is that based on a 703 or 699?
It's based, it's based on 703.
So that could be reduced as well, if ADA stays the same or go down any further?
That's correct.
Where did we go down? Where was the largest decrease in ADA, at the elementary or at the high school?
I believe at the high school.
We had picked up a little, we picked up a little bit at the high?
Not yet. We'll?
Okay. All right, I'll let you continue.
Can I ask a quick question before you go on? You keep mentioning the supplemental concentration grant and not having spent it. What's the dollar amount on that?
So this year, it's the $241,000. Next year, I believe it goes up to 3, $535,000. So it increases another additional $300,000. And then I believe it goes up another $200,000, maybe a little less than $200,000 in '16, '17. I can have those exact numbers for you.
That's good enough. Thank you.
And tell me again how it is or isn't reflected in this multi-year projection?
So the, so the income for LCFF, based on 703 ADA over the next three years, is included in the multi-year projection. The increase for LCFF, the increase in the base is included in the revenue piece.
Okay.
What's not included is the expenditure piece, because we don't?
The district hasn't? Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't know exactly what we're going to spend it on, but we know we are going to spend it, so, on something, so?
But I can't, I can't put that into?
In the big line item budget, yeah, but in, in this budget, it's not line items. It's just one expense line.
It, it will come out of the ending fund balance, is what I'm saying.
So that 241 plus 500 plus another, you know, 600 or so in year three, that'll be, all of that's coming out of the ending fund balance?
That's correct. We're going to have to address?
That's a million dollars there.
The programs that we are, that are encroaching right now, be it federal or state categoricals, and we're going to have to really take a hard look at what we're doing at both school sites and throughout the district operationally.
And, and/or we need to look at how we can increase our ADA to keep our revenue neutral as well.
So we've been saying we've had a structural deficit problem. We do. Even though we received a large amount of cash in 1213 from the redevelopment funds and that lawsuit settlement in Los Angeles Unified that made us basic aid for one year, but those are one-time monies, and?
But this is what, what concerns me is the decline in ADA, because that's how the district went under the last time. And, you know, for, for me as a board member, I was not aware that ADA had declined, you know, like it did. So for me, I think we need to, you know, also be talking about how are we going to come up with strategies to increase our ADA? And if ADA is declining at the high school, we really need to look at that, you know?
Just one, agree. One comment I had, in terms of gear up, just before we move beyond too far and go into budget assumptions, too. In terms of the gear up, which notes here that it expires this calendar year, I think the intent is to actually go back outright for gear up? Is that planned?
Yes, we're in the process of actually looking at reapplying for another six-year cycle of gear up funding. The grant deadline is July 7th. Ms. Allen has already convened a committee, including partners that are required to be part of that grant, and the towns and, towns and public affairs district retains, has already contacted us because they have a presence in Washington, and so they will be assisting us with that grant application.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that one. 300 plus is a big number. Okay. Thanks.
Just, you know, for, just brief history. I think back when I was here previously, and at that point, we were still housing the secondary program at the old ESS site. I think there was some anticipation back then that when we were looking at temporary facilities for the 912 students, that there was the, the possibility that we would lose some ADA. At the same time, we also anticipated that when the new facility is completed, we would have an increase in ADA. So, you know, I mean, certainly the board could direct staff to develop a somewhat more conservative ADA number. However, the net effect on the budget when you adopt it is it'll show a much lower ending fund balance. So it's kind of six of one, you know?
No. I, I understand that, but, you know, I just was not aware of a decline in ADA like we have.
That's, you mean, you're talking about in the past? When, when the district went bankrupt the first time?
No, I'm talking about this year. I mean, you're making, I didn't know that we were down to 699 in ADA. I thought we were still somewhere in the 720, 725, you know? I knew we was basing our, this budget on 703, but I didn't know we dropped down to that low.
I, I think, I think I've reported, I think I've reported that, that this year's budget, the 1314, was based on 703, and next year, we're basing it on 703. I, I believe I shared that, have shared that information with the board. The?
To the mic. You gotta come to the mic. You gotta come to the mic. You gotta come to the mic. Hold on.
I just want to let you guys know on the P2, 1314 P2, the ADA actually is 697, not 699. And then our enrollment is from 1214 P2, 730?
Okay.
To right now, 701 or 70 something.
Okay.
Just today.
Thank you.
So I stand corrected?
Well, well, just in general, I think it's just a matter of, and we've had in the past, and we just need to look at that practice again about looking at our retention, I forgot all the Rs, but all that, our program, our enrollment, the whole process and policy and, you know, how that activity is going. And it's not necessarily, you know, this year, a lot is different, but I think just in years past, we've done that, and I think we just need to pay closer attention to that effort and definitely assure, you know, all of us that we'll, we're attracting and retaining students and finding out what's happening or not happening when, you know, that isn't happening. So I think that's really, I mean, I think essentially that's the issue, is just being more present about it.
The district has been pretty diligent about calling parents with regard to absences. Our wellness coordinator, I know, was calling at the elementary school site and the high school students, anytime they were absent or missing a period. So, and we have a pretty high percentage of ADA compared to enrollment, at least at the elementary level. Actually, it's really, really good. It's about 96%, 95%, which is, is really good. I will tell you, with regard to the construction of ECCL, the last, the last districts I worked at, we were in the process of building a new high school, complete teardown. The school at that time housed 2,400 kids. The first year that it opened, the brand-new school opened up, it had 2,600 kids, and now has close to 3,000 kids. And a lot of those students were going to districts outside the district. So I'm hoping that it has the same effect here. But we have to wait and see.
No.
Going back to the analysis of the fund balance, the district does maintain the required 4% reserve in 1415 and then throughout 1516 and 1617. And I guess we'll still wait for what those maximum levels will be. And my guess is, one of the reasons why this maximum is, is going into place is that with the fear of Proposition 30 not passing last November, or November 2012, was it? I can't. That districts did build up a reserve because there would have been massive cuts had that not passed. And by all indications, it wasn't supposed to pass for, without the fight of the governor going up and down the state urging the passage of Proposition 30. So, and it is set to expire. It's not, the tax isn't ongoing. It will expire in, I believe, six years or now five years. So we will put, be putting those into our multi-year projections, that expiration of that in the, in the near future. Again, our ending balance is estimated to be 3.3. We are looking at the STIRS rate increasing in 1516 of 1.6%, and then an additional 1.6% in 1617. So that's going to be in excess of $55,000 in each of those years, so it grows. Again, Proposition 30 starts to expire in 1617. We lose $47 per ADA, and then in 1718, we lose another $95 per ADA. So those start to become significant numbers for us in the future.
And the, the STIRS, it's a compounded 1.6%, right?
That's correct.
And then, and then it, doesn't it even increase more steeply after 1617?
Yes, I think there's a 20-year projection with it going, increasing up from, so this year's 8.25% of?
But something in like eight or nine years?
To 19%.
Yeah, in like eight or nine years, it's going to be 19%.
Yes, it's, it's very significant, without any new dollars coming to schools to help pay for that.
And the reason for that is that the governor wants to try to fund the unfunded liability for PERS?
For CalSTRS.
CalSTRS, I'm sorry, yes, it's CalSTRS.
So sometime back, the fund, in its heyday, was making lots of money. They increased benefit. The legislature did that with STIRS, without any input from schools, teacher unions, and everybody was happy. Because of the economic downturn, their portfolio took a big hit, and so there is a unfunded liability now.
And it, you know, it's one that does need to be addressed. It gets more expensive if we don't address it. But the projection has the district, not the state, taken the most, you know, the biggest piece of the, of the hit on it, and there's, there's no additional funding that's being put in to support this. So it's, it's really going to pinch us on our ability to increase and improve programs here.
This will also, this will also affect us at the table in the future, because some of the costs get shifted to the employees. So I believe in a couple of years, the state is proposing that the increased contribution from the employer, employee starts to kick in for our certificated staff.
And you want to be able to pay teachers when they retire, you know? I mean, you, you know, we have to advocate for it, you know, as well as teachers being able to have their retirement, once they retire, you know? But I do agree with you, with you, remember, it does, you know, put a pinch in, into the district's budget, but at the same time, hopefully in the end, the employee will get, you know, those funds back to them for their living, living expenses when they retire.
As a member of STIRS, I thank you for that.
Yeah.
It's also a nice workaround for Prop 65, because as the state has to pay more into STIRS, if they do it through the district, it gets them out of that two-thirds ceiling requirement. It's actually not, while not good for districts, it's an interesting sort of workaround for the state.
Right.
So?
You mean Prop 98?
98, sorry. I tried to sound like I knew something there and missed, so.
Okay. That prop, yeah?
So I had questions here, but I'm going to go through in more detail the next set of pages that start with the budget assumption. And I'll, I'll try to go through these a little more quickly.
So I'm going, before you start, so I'm going to assume that we are not expecting any carryover from any of our programs for, from 1314?
There's minimal carryover.
Okay.
There, there is some carryover in some funds.
So that's a hope of maybe a little bit of increase in revenue for 1415 in a certain pocket?
Maybe, yes. Small.
Okay.
Because we're, I think we're pretty good on our projections for the ending fund balance, but there may be additional dollars that fall out when we shake that tree.
Right. And if, and if that happens, we'll see that at first interim as well, correct?
You may see that sooner after the state budget. If there's some changes, we'll bring that back 60 days after the state adopts its budget.
Okay.
You, you will know more definitively about other unrestricted dollars that are carryover when the district's able to close the books on 1314.
Okay. Thanks.
So the budget assumptions that are included in 1415, we've gone over this with the board in the past, so I'll go through this quickly. Our, we're hoping our enrollment goes up, back up to 732, to give us a projected ADA of 703. We're assuming a class-size student-to-teacher ratio at 20 to 1 for K3, 29 to 1 for grades four through six, 26 to 1 for grades seven and eight, and 19 to 1 in grades nine through 12, and that's what we have about now. And actually, it may be a little higher, as Ms. Sue said, our enrollment has decreased We're looking at 27 FTE at Anna Yates with those listed class-size projections there. That's still on? Uh, that's still on page seven. Page eight, we go to additional staff we have at Annie Yates, and that's, we had a teacher coach, art teacher, science teacher, librarian, ELD teacher, instructional assistants, two in our ELD program, one in technology, and one for physical ed. At our high school, uh, we're projecting to have twelve point four teachers with a point-six counselor. Going to page nine. Some of our classified positions, we have two administrative assistants at the elementary school. And actually, we have to make a change on the high school. We have one administrative assistant at the high school, and we've moved the, the register data coordinator to the district office.
Okay. Cause I've seen it, yeah, okay.
So that position is no longer at the high school. And we have two custodians servicing Annie Yates. And we have, uh, two custodians servicing, servicing the high school. One gets shared, uh, with service at the district office. Uh, management confidential includes director supervisor maintenance, one superintendent, one director of K-12 instruction, one director of special education and pupil services, one ESS principal, high school principal, one elementary principal, one chief business official, one executive, confidential executive assistant. Uh, the position for capital projects and construction manager will also have to change. That will come off. Uh, it is off the budget in the, um, in the Fund Twenty-One. Uh, it's not included. Uh, we have to take it off of, off of this sheet, um, since we've hired a construction management firm. Uh, we're funding a point-seven director of food services. The other part of that position's director of wellness. We have one director of information technology, one fiscal analyst, human resource director. Other positions that we have, school nurse, one school psychologist, one speech therapist, uh, point-five-three FTE noon duty at the high school, a point-eight noon duty at Annie Yates Elementary School.
What's a noon duty? What's that function?
Like a yard supervisor.
Okay.
Uh, it's, uh, that position is carried by Mr. Alexander.
Okay.
Uh, security supervisor at the high school, fiscal service specialist, administrative assistant, coordinator at the high school, administrative program assistant, a food service worker. We have two point-three FTEs, uh, registered data coordinator, which is a position that moved from the high school and is now at the district office. The revenue assumptions, again, we've gone through, through these with the board previously. But again, uh, we're looking at a point-eight-five-eight-six COLA from LCFF. A revenue, well, not revenue limit, but it's the local control funding formula, dollar amount per ADA is estimated to be about eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars per student. State special education revenues, we projected to go up by point-eight-six. State categorical programs, again, by point-eight-six. Uh, federal revenues, we're expecting to remain flat. Uh, and that's from the sequestration that we experienced this last year.
How much are we, how much are we receiving in lottery revenue? And, and what's the expenditure that those revenues?
I could answer that question a little later.
Okay.
The per ADA is a hundred and twenty-four, unrestricted thirty dollars for restricted. And those restricted dollars have to specifically go into the classroom. Uh, on the expenditure side, we're budgeting according to the staffing assumptions. Uh, we have projections in there for step and column increases. Uh, and those step and column increases, increases range from one point four-five to about one point six, depending on the category of employee. On page, on page eleven, we budget our substitutes based on the historical information that we, that we have. The employee benefits, um, I have to revise the STIRS amount from eight point two-five. That will be, now be, um, nine point five. Medicare at one point four-five, workers' compensation, two point five, uh, unemployment, point zero-five. And we're still negotiating with one of our employee groups, oh, excuse me. We have settled, uh, the health and welfare amount, uh, with our certificated staff. And we'll be carrying that cost for fourteen, fifteen. And we do have a cap in place for fifteen, or sixteen, seventeen, excuse me. Uh, classified, um, some of the same fixed costs of PERS rate is eleven point four-four-two percent. And that's an example of another retirement plan being higher than the CalSTRS. So as the CalSTRS goes up, you can see in relation to what the district pays for PERS is eleven point four-four. Uh, social security, six point two, workers' comp, again, two point five, unemployment, point zero. For classified, we were, we're projecting an increase of, um, about ten percent costs over and above what we're paying now. Uh, discretionary allocations, we're basing on enrollments. And we'll get those enrollments within the first two weeks, uh, schools in session. But we're using the current enrollment, uh, that's twenty-eight dollars for K-six, fifty dollars per student for grade seven and eight, and a hundred and twenty-three dollars for grades nine through twelve. Along with those discretionary allocations, uh, we are making contributions to our special ed program, about two thousand five hundred for each learning handicap, learning center teacher. We are not allowing carryover for any of these discretionary amounts, with the exception of the mandated cost monies that we allocated to schools. So this last year, we received mandated cost funds, and we allocated about fifteen thousand dollars back out to the schools to be used for classroom purposes. And we're allowing carryover with that, with those dollars. Our utility rates, we're looking at increasing of PG&E for electricity, four percent, natural gas, five percent, water, eight percent. That may be higher with regard to the drought coming into place. What we base these increases on were utility bills from last year, and then the most current utility bill, um, that we had at the time when we developed these numbers. So that would have been, um, April's utility bills. And I'm expecting those increases to be a higher percentage for the, our water usage. Garbage, one percent increase. Going to page, going to page twelve, um, we're budgeting our property and liability insurance based on the information we get from the Alameda County Schools Insurance Group. Our capital outlay budget is really zero-based budgeting. There's no dollars budgeted for capital improvement. So either there has to be budgeted dollars in a, a program budget that a program manager moves, or there has to be a good reason why we're putting dollars into that. Uh, this last year, we, we spent a considerable amount increasing our, and updating our technology. Uh, one percent, uh, our estimated one percent cost to our bargaining unit, certificated salaries is about thirty-six thousand dollars. Classified salaries, almost nine thousand. Our unrepresented group, sixteen thousand. So if you go to page twelve, we start to look at, uh, the budget summary analysis for the general fund. It shows graphically the components of ending balance, but it really doesn't break down all the ending fund balances that you saw in the, uh, previous slideshow.
And Mark, also, this, this ending fund balance doesn't tie to the draft bu, draft budget. If you look at it, four million eighty-three, six-four-five. Now, for fourteen, fifteen, you have three-three, four-eight, six-seven-four. But even if you go to the beginning fund balance, it's still, um, four million oh-nine-eight, three-one-one. So.
Where are you?
Um, I'm looking at the, um, the draft, draft budget, adopted budget.
What page?
Actually, I'm look, actually, I'm look.
You're, he's on page thirteen.
Well.
He was comparing it.
Right, I know, actually, I'm on page, like, four.
Four. Comparing page four to thirteen.
And if you, and if you look at your ending fund balance, it's not four million oh-eight-three, six-four-five.
That's because there's a difference in the beginning fund balance.
Right.
So the total resources and the total uses are the same. It's just part of estimating that ending fund balance.
So twelve is an estimate, estimated number?
So thirteen is, is, page thirteen shows a larger beginning fund balance, which will be adjusted downward. So on page thirteen, under total amount, beginning fund balance.
I have, my page thirteen is a graph.
Yes.
Okay.
There's also a beginning fund balance amount.
Right, seven, seven million, oh, four-nine-eight-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's where the difference is. The resources and the uses are the same.
Mm-hmm.
So if you go to page fourteen, for fourteen, fifteen, we have a total revenue budget of nine million eight ninety-seven, four-seventy-seven. And that's reflected in this graph. That beginning balance still needs to be adjusted because we still don't know what it, that will be until we actually close the books.
Yeah, okay, and I think that's what I was saying, your beginning balance on page four is four million oh-nine-eight, three-one-one. So it's definitely in the beginning balance area, okay.
So that's still yet to be determined as we close the books.
All right.
So you can see the total revenue summary on page fourteen. The largest piece of the pie is represented by, uh, the SACCO still hasn't caught up with the LCFF change. So they're still listing in escape, this has revenue limit, but it's really LCFF. So that's the biggest piece of the pie for revenues. The next big, biggest piece is under local revenue, and that's where our parcel tax dollars come into play. And then we only receive five percent of our total revenues in state revenue, and almost three percent in federal dollars. So that kind of graphically shows you the money coming into the district from the different sources. Then if you go to page fifteen, you can graphically see how the dollars are spent. The biggest piece of the pie is paid out to certificated non-management, which would be our teachers. Our next biggest piece of the pie is under employee benefits at twenty-two point six percent. And then services and operating expenses at seventeen point three-four percent. And then classified non-management, or excuse me, management salaries at twelve percent, classified non-management at almost eight percent, and then books and supplies at five percent. So our total expenditures on this page does equal our total budgeted expenditures off of the slides in, um, the next few pages here that I'll get to. So if you go to page sixteen, you can see how this district spends dollars by function. We spent five million, seven hundred thousand dollars on instruction, as well we should. We spend one point three million dollars on instructional-related services. We spend six hundred and nineteen thousand on pupil services, a hundred and two thousand dollars on ancillary services, one point six million dollars for general administration, one million dollars on plant services, and then one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on other outgo, for a total of ten million, six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. And if you go to page seventeen, you'll see, uh, that same information in that third column of the projected budget for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. You can see there's a percentage change column on the far right. And our, you can see our income went down by one point one percent overall from thirteen, fourteen to fourteen, fifteen. Our expenditures went down two point nine-nine percent from ten point seven to ten point, uh, four. And then we've already had discussion with regard to our ending fund balance and the breakdown of that.
You know, I can tell you one account that I'm interested to get a little bit more detail on, and that's the services and other operating expenses. Um, is there any way, and I'm, and I'm, I don't mean now, that, um, maybe you can give a detailed breakdown of what is in that fifty-eight-hundred account at a later date?
I might be able to do some of that now. So if you go to page eighteen, you can see in the far right column, uh, projected budget fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah, I can see.
You get into your more line item information.
Right, I got it, you're right.
You can see the breakdown between, in the, under the revenue limit sources or LCFF sources, uh, what we get in state aid and what we get in taxes. The total are five point seven million dollars that we receive under the LCFF funding formula. Then the next section below that is federal revenues. And you can see the breakdown of our federal revenues of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then below that, you can see our other state revenues and how those dollars come in. And to answer your question, Mr. Dwin, uh, state lottery, our unrestricted portion is eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we will get more information with regard to how that money is exactly spent to you at a future meeting.
Okay.
And then other local revenues of three point three million dollars and how that is broken down. And you can see the largest portion is two million, five hundred thousand dollars for parcel tax.
Okay. Can you remind me what the federal gear-up program covered? Cause that, that program was in place. Because that program was in place long before I got here.
It was in place long before I got here, too. I can't... I can't tell you exactly what that program is about or what it funded. I can tell you some of the funding.
Was it after school?
Some of it was for the high school principal. Some of it went to pay for Brenda Collins' salary. I believe some of it went to Anna Karita Allen's salary. And then we also had a contract with Aspire School District where we provided payments to Aspire as part of the grant. That's about all I can tell you about federal gear-up.
Aspire Charter School?
That's correct.
Okay, for some services from them, or...
Well, the requirements of the gear-up grant required that we work with another school, I believe. Ms. Allen, is that correct? That's why Aspire was kind of a partner with us in the application of the gear-up. So as a result, they received some services.
And, but it's, as you said, there's a new cycle of gear-up funding that we can apply for?
Yes, the application deadline for the next six-year cycle ends July 7. So Ms. Allen's already formed a committee. They've already looked at that. In addition, Townsend Public Affairs has contacted us, the Washington DC office, and they're offering, under the terms of our contract with them, to provide services to assist us with the grant application process. There has been some changes in the priorities for gear-up. We'd like to think we could take our initial application from six years ago and just make, update it. But there is some shift in some of the priorities. So we're currently in the process of looking at that.
Okay, what, do you know what the overall priorities are for the grant at this point?
Yeah, I just looked at the application in a cursory way.
Yeah, students getting to college, I mean, I don't know.
Again, the major emphasis of gear-up is, of course, providing counseling and guidance services for students to prepare them for college. But there were a couple of other new priorities. I can't recall off the top of my head what those were. But we are eligible. That has been determined to apply for the next six-year cycle.
And was that something we could have applied for last year that we missed the boat on, or...
No, because we're in the last year of the first six-year cycle. You can't apply for the grant while you're still receiving the grant.
So you have to be off it for just at least a year?
No, it's... When the grant period begins, it has to be after the grant you receive ends. And so I think the grant cycle begins September or October 1st, something around...
So we might actually know as soon as October? I mean, we might start getting new money as soon as October?
Well, we would anticipate that. It's hard to know with the federal government frequently. But the next six-year cycle begins, I believe it's October 1st. Our current grant ends August 30th.
All right, well, I'm just, you know, like the MA money. I mean, it's helpful to know that we have irons in the fire that might actually make our picture look a little brighter at certain points during the year. Obviously, a grant is different than the MA, you know, sort of program. But it's good to know it's out there.
We will keep the board informed when that application actually goes into place and what the expectation is at that time.
The other, I guess, kind of revenue thought in addition to remember Dwin's point about raising ADA, on your multi-year projections, what's the unduplicated pupil count that you have us projected at?
That was remaining the same also at 67%.
Is that what we came in at, 67?
Yes, so we are expecting to work on that and get that back up to what it was a prior year, at least at 76%.
Yeah.
And this district in the past, I had, from what I understand, was at 80%.
I think we, I thought we were at 80% as well. But even if we jumped that up to 76, you know, 9, 10%, that's going to reflect, we'll get more money under LCFF as a result, right?
That will increase our supplemental concentration grant allocation, yes.
I think at one point you said $2,000 a student or something?
That's, yes, that's a figure that had been thrown out across the state on average, yes.
Okay, that's helpful.
So page 19 is a breakdown of those major classifications. I won't go through them all. But Mr. Dwin, on page 19, towards the bottom, you'll see a further breakdown of the services and other operating expenses.
But it was 5,800 I was really talking about.
What's in there?
Right, what's in there? The professional consulting services and operating expenses. No, it shouldn't be, not 5,800.
We can get you much more detailed information. Most of that's copier services, non-public school costs, some transportation.
We put non-public schools in there as well, okay.
Other contracted services. But we'll give you a more detailed listing of what that is.
Better word, thank you.
And then the next page, page 20, is other outgo, transfers and direct cost. Page 21 is again the multi-year budget projection. I won't go through in detail about this. We've already seen it on the slide. I think you have a good understanding that we will be working on the deficit spending going forward. And another main point is that we still maintain our 4% reserve out through 1617.
And again, your title says 1213, another actual. It should be 1314.
We'll get that corrected before adoption.
Thank you.
The next page, page 22, is the reflection of Anna Yates unrestricted funding. You can see that we spend $3.6 million at Anna Yates. It's one of our bigger schools. It has more than 500 students at that school. Page 23 kind of summarizes the page 22. Page 24 is the restricted dollars that is spent at Anna Yates. Most of that is in special education, and that's $413,000 of our restricted monies go to Anna Yates. Page 25 and 26 is a reflection of what we spent at the high school for unrestricted dollars. And that's $2.1 million of unrestricted dollars we spent at the high school.
And this is what concerns me, is that from an unrestricted standpoint, you know, we're putting close to like 35, 36% of our budget into the high school. And for me, I just don't see how we're going to get to where we want to get to as far as being a college prep, you know, district and high school if we're only spending this little bit of funds in our general, at our high school. So for me, you know, we, I think the board needs to look at how to infuse more resources into the high school because clearly, we're not doing enough, we're not funding enough resources into the high school to have it to be the kind of high school we really want it to be. This is my own personal opinion.
Now, remember, our enrollment has gone down at the high school, so that...
Well, that's even worse.
But, I mean, it's 28% or so of the student population, and they're getting, you know, it's more expensive to educate high school students, so they're getting more than 28% of funds.
And remember, our FTE ratio to student is about 19 to 1, which is pretty good at a high school.
But I still say, you know, and I can agree with both, we still, as a district, need to put more resources into our high school.
On the restricted side, on page 27, the district is spending $218,000 of restricted dollars. And again, that's mostly in special education for the high school. The next section I'll go through real quickly. Pages 28 through 32 are in regards to the Child Development Fund. We contract with the YMCA for our child development services, and that's housed here in this facility. We receive about $145,000, and that's the contract that we have with the Y, and that's where we pay them for those services. Going to page 33 through... Through 41 covers our cafeteria fund. Our expected revenues for 1415 is $304,000. Our projected expenditures are $480,000. So that is where we come up with the contribution from the general fund of $167,000. We are looking at changing our service provider for that program in hopes of saving dollars.
Are we going to do that for the next school year?
We are trying to look at that, yes. Ms. Dunn has already solicited quotes and believe we have responses to those requests already in hand. Pages 42 through 46 cover deferred maintenance fund. We had a beginning balance this year of $33,000. We've spent $18,000 in deferred maintenance, some of that in this building. We replaced the flooring in the back here. We had asbestos floor tile that was starting to chip and crack. And with the use by the Y and by district staff, we decided to remove and replace it. And we're expecting to spend about another $10,000 next year. Pages 47 through... 56 is our special reserve fund for other employment benefits after retirement. It's basically a holding account in the event the district ceases to exist and has to pay out our retirees who are still eligible and entitled to benefit costs. And what this district does is if you've, once you pass the age of 55, after a certain number of years of service, you're eligible to have your benefits paid for up to age 65, depending on your years of service.
Is that, does that have an end date, or is that ongoing?
It ends at age 65, when Social Security or Medicare...
That offer, is that still in the contract? Or is it ongoing for new hires as well?
It's for new hires as well. It's in the, it's part of the contract. And I can't tell you the years of service, but it's pretty high. It's 15 or 18 years. Oh, 20?
20.
Page 57...
Did we go through 521 already?
Did I skip that?
Because I do have a question regarding...
So page, page 52?
Yeah.
Page 52 through 56, I'm sorry, I got that...
No, just a quick question, and I think I may know the answer, though. But why are we just budgeting $9 million for 1415, and construction will start in 1415? No, for 2014, 2015 draft budget, the total expenditures are 9.5. And if we are anticipating construction in fiscal year 1415, shouldn't that be a little bit higher? A lot higher?
It should be substantially higher.
Right, exactly.
So we'll make a budget adjustment at first interim. We'd like to get that contract in place and then get a schedule from the contractor. Then we'll make that budget change.
Thank you.
But page 52 through 56 is our capital facilities fund or bond fund. And this is a fund where, that's funding ECL project. Page 57 through page... I want to get another... Through 62 is our capital facilities fund. And this is where the district collects fees from developers. Currently, our expected ending fund balance will be $3.2 million. Those dollars are geared for the ECL project going forward. Pages 64 through 92 all deal with the parcel tax. The parcel tax committee went through this information in detail. I'm not going to go through every single page of this. If you'd like to ask questions at a later date with regard to the parcel tax, we can, if you email those to me or the superintendent, we'll make sure we have the answers at our next, before adoption.
So I have a question regarding the parcel tax. But since the committee has seen the report, when are they going to make their report to the board to bless it? When will the oversight committee be coming to the board blessing the, what was it? The actuals? What did they say, the actuals or budget?
They review the budget.
Right.
I believe they report on the actuals.
Actuals, they do.
So that will probably come in November or December.
That is correct. So the, they will write, the chair of the fiscal oversight will write a report to the board after we review the expenditures for the prior year.
Yeah, you're right, that's something like October, November, something like that. That's right, okay, thank you.
And with that, I'm finished.
So I had a question for you, and I don't remember what year, so I just can't, I couldn't tell you, but...
Was I here?
I hope so, I'm going to hope so. But there was a chart of all of the grants that, I'll say, I don't want to call it soft money, but money that was due to expire at a given point. And I think you did it, I don't remember. But it would be helpful if that can be updated and provided just because of the gear-up, just as an example, not that... updated and provided, just because of the gear up, just as an example, not that nobody knew, but I think just to have some awareness of funding that's coming offline or set to expire, and I think that was on that initial, you know, that chart, and the year would be, you know, X, Y, and Z, but-
I don't remember preparing something like that, I think that was Terry-
Could've been Terry.
Terry Ryland.
And, yeah.
I do have some of her information, so I will search for that.
I think that would be helpful for us, so we'd have, able to anticipate a little bit better.
And since you mentioned that, because I am also interested in the after-school program funds, the ACES, and where we stand with those funds as well, for our after-school program.
I think it was in there too, I think so, because I don't remember. But if we, if we can get that, you know, annually, I think will help, just to keep our eyes on certain, our funding streams in that way.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bonnet on what was presented this evening? Again, we'll have a final review and hopefully adoption by our, on our June twenty-fifth meeting.
Yeah, no.
We have some takeaways, of course, but-
Yeah, we'll be talking about this a little further, a little more tonight.
Yeah, if I could just make, just, just a couple of closing comments. So as you look at the general fund budget, kind of holistically, I would say overall, the budget's in good shape, but there is the ongoing deficit spending. And I think as we staff reviewed it, the seven hundred and forty-nine thousand or so in deficit spending, so, a part of that is one-time expenditures in the current year. So the actual structural deficit is really, the ongoing deficit's about four hundred thousand, a little over four hundred thousand. The challenge, and so, as we, when I was here, not realizing that we'd have three straight years of massive budget cuts, and districts were deficit spending in order to kind of maintain as many of the programs as could, so it became very common, many districts even dipped into the reserve, into their required reserve. So I think the strategy moving forward as you move into next year really is to look at how you can, over the three-year, multi-year projection, reduce a percentage of that deficit spending, because you never know from one year to the next, particularly as the economy has picked up, what additional new revenues will come into the district, and the board will have some flexibility in how they use the new revenues, or whether you're gonna use that to offset further the ongoing deficit spending. I would not recommend that you try to eliminate the entire ongoing deficit spending in one year. I personally feel that's a little bit of overreaction.
Yeah.
So I think you need to have a plan over multi-years as to how you're gonna reduce the deficit, understanding that next year, the year after, fifteen, sixteen, there would be additional new revenues that will come into the district. With that said, the other piece you need to understand about the deficit spending is most of it's in restricted programs, which makes it a little bit more difficult to address, because in many districts, and so, correct me if I, if I'm off track here, but special education in most districts encroaches on the general fund.
Yeah, they do.
So special ed always costs more than the revenues received, so that is, that, you know, if you want to maintain providing appropriate service to students, that's gonna contribute a little bit to the ongoing deficit. I haven't looked at the recent numbers, but it's very common in many districts that programs for English language learners often cost more than the actual revenues that are received to address students. Now, of course, we have supplemental concentrated grants, but prior to that, typically the federal revenue and even state categoricals never really fully funded ELL in many districts.
That's true.
And because we're small, we still have a high percentage of students who are eligible for those services, so, you know, a good portion of the deficit spending on the restricted side is in order to maintain appropriate services for those students. And so, my only advice is, it makes the reducing of the encroachment or the deficit a little more challenging, because you have to consider what the needs of those students are. Was I really off base, Mr. Bonnet?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't off base, but it still doesn't help the fact that we wanna keep services for our students on one end, and we need to increase, you know, services on the other end, especially at the high school, so, you know, it is what it, I guess it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm just in a quandary about how, how we, you know, what, what are the, I don't feel like we're excessively spending, I feel like we need to be spending more. We need counselors, we need PE teacher, we need music teacher, you know, the list goes on.
Yeah.
So what, you know, I don't feel like there's a lot of fat in the district to be trimmed, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, and, and if, you know, there's gonna be stirs, additional requirements, and if there's some, you know, new limits on ending fund balance, so we, I mean, we've enabled a deficit spend because we have reserves that we can draw down, so if that's gone, then it just seems like we're steering towards a, a point where pretty soon, we're not gonna be able to do a multi-year, three-year projection and, and be solvent. So that's, those are just thoughts going through my mind.
The, the paradox is, we're deficit spending, we're getting more money that needs to be spent, certain segments of our population with new program.
Right.
That's, that, that's being dealt with in other districts also, and much differently from district to district.
Well, and, and I'll just add, throw in, I think that's where partnerships become incredibly valuable. So I think there's opportunity, and one thing I will say about Emeryville, we have always found a way, and unfortunately, we probably need to be more methodical and more strategic about finding the way, but even Dr. Bowles' presentation last night just spoke to a way, and where we can get to the gains that we've, you know, we, we want. But at the same time, I think it just takes the commitment and the time and the will to support those partnerships that are required to look at new funding that has nothing to do with the constraints that we have, but, you know, just new options and new opportunities, so I think we have to be a little bit more, I won't say creative, but creative.
No, we have to be creative, because, first of all, we cannot lose ADA, and if we're losing the ADA at the high school, that's telling us something, that we need to beef up the high school. Because although, you know, I am all for, you know, the elementary school, but if we loo, if those kids, if those students are not coming to the high school, you know, after the elementary school, then, I mean, what do we do?
So instead of maybe that debate here-
We have to have that retention, and I'm not debating, I'm just making a statement.
No, 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 I'm just saying, instead of perhaps the debate here, I think it, it does speak to, you know, what we've talked about, which that initial conversation about our vision, so, I mean, I think it speaks to our whole, what's our whole-
Plan.
Plan, so, I mean, I think that's a broader, that is all that-
No, I, I agree.
I'm not, not you, or, you know, whatever, but I'm just saying, it does speak to the broader conversation.
You're right.
But I'll just throw that out there.
Since I'm only gonna be here for two more weeks, I also, from history, I just wanna just make sure the board understands that part of the conversation we had about the secondary program, the high school program, back five, six years ago, was the fact that we knew that we were starting to really kind of make a difference in students, and I think as you witnessed at the recent graduation-
Yes.
-ceremony, that our students were doing very well.
Right.
I mean, you know, our goal should be a hundred percent of the students.
Right.
And that's the goal of every district, but when you look at the percentage of students who distinguished themselves in this last class, the senior class of fourteen, one of the things we've talked about in the past is, we don't really do a very good job in messaging the community about the good things that are going on here.
I agree.
Which is why we had a super tense communications committee to talk about how we can make sure, you know, we don't market, or I guess what I'm saying is, we don't market ourselves very effectively.
No, you're right, you're right.
And that's something, I think, Mr. Dwin, you're, you're suggesting that one of the things we need to do to help the high school enrollment is, we need to get the word out, we need to make sure we publicize, I mean, whether it's, it's to take out an ad in the local paper that says, congratulations, Emery class of twenty-fourteen, and to list the colleges that they were accepted to, which many school districts do, as part of their marketing to kind of, you know, publicize how well the high school program has worked. So, I mean, I think that's another piece of the conversation that I think the board needs to kind of think about.
I'm gonna jump in here, because I've been waiting a moment here, but that's exactly what I think, I think we can look at the cuts, but I think revenue is where we can have the most effective moment, and to do that is, we have to sell what we do well.
That's right.
You know, and while I agree with you that we want to put more children into our high school, it starts by getting them in the elementary school and convincing them what a solid job we're doing, so they stay with us.
Exactly.
We don't lose them, and we need to start that early and often, and get them over there and see the programs.
Exactly, that's it.
And connect them to that school, and, you know, I'm across the street from Knox, you know, I'm next door to Annie Yates, but I'm across the street from Knox, and I was out there on their lottery day, my son plays in that playground, and the number of parents who didn't know Annie Yates was there, and I would say, we're a better school than Knox, and we're not even, you know, a block away, and my house is blocking it from the street, but it's there, you can see it.
That's why.
Yeah, so, you know, and it's, but it's, it was incredible to me that I'm, you know, sixty feet from Annie Yates.
You're right.
And parents are upset they're not getting into Knox, because they didn't win the lottery, and-
Right.
You know, we would welcome them with open arms, and no lottery needed.
And we have a great elementary school.
We oughta market on lottery day, next time around.
So I, and, you know, there's a chance to advertise.
It's fine.
Go ahead.
I, I feel like I beat this point every time we have any kind of conversation, but all I'm hearing, and they're all very good points, very valid points, but all I'm hearing is this laundry list of work that needs to happen, and we have listened to staff and, and board members cry about the bandwidth issues in this, in this district, not saying that the work is impossible, but it is going to take very strategic planning to making sure that the work not only can get done, but can get done well without burning out our people.
Yeah.
Because there's, that, that's what's happening, is there, 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 I mean, not saying that I'm watching staff be burned out, but you can't help, but, you know, we're here at a meeting, the second board meeting in a row this evening, or this week.
And there will be others.
And we're gonna be here until ten o'clock at night, and we were here till ten-thirty last night, and we, you can't keep running people like that, 'cause they're just not, they're not gonna be at their best, because they're not rested, and they're not energized, and they're not, you know, we need to make sure that we take care of our people so that they can do the enormous amount of work that needs to be done. And Dr. Rubio, you know, play a big role in, in that strategic planning, so, get ready.
Joy has spoken.
Yeah. Amen.
President Dice.
Please, Mr. Bonnet.
I just wanted to say one final thing. I wanted to thank Dora Sue for all her hard work in putting the rest of this budget together. She's the backbone that got into the details of the Big Sacks report.
Yep. All right, you gotta speak in the mic.
I know you guys do have a big conversation on MAR, just to let you guys know, there is a two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand accounts receivable set up in the book that to be coming from MAR. So any money that we're going to receive, it go toward to cover that AR that we booked for the prior years. So just to let you guys know, it's not additional money, it, we will get additional money if the funding that we are going to receive next year is going to be beyond two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
That's helpful. Yeah, so, I mean, I think, just my concluding thought is, yeah, we, we do need to focus on revenue, ADA, marketing, I think if we, you know, if we, if we get another twenty students, that's a hundred and sixty thousand a year. We get, bump up our unduplicated count to where it should be, another ten percent, that's a hundred and forty thousand a year. I mean, and we get the gear up grant, that's three, four hundred thousand a year. We, we, we should be able to get ourselves a bunch of tech grants from Google and, you know, other tech companies, as we, you know, think about and roll out our, our tech thrust plans. And we've got, we're making an investment in a grant writer with Eave, right, so, so, I mean, we, we ought, we gotta be thinking about more than, than just, how do we cut our deficit spending?
Work to be done. Any other questions for Mr. Bonnet? Members of the public, any comments to the budget, draft budget at this point? All right, so, thank you again, and we will be seeing you on the twenty-fifth, and at this time, the board will-
President Dice?
Sure.
We've had a request, and the request is-